Councilmember Randy Sinstallin for invocation.
Let's pray. Almighty God, we take a moment before this meeting and we acknowledge you and we thank you for this place called Fergus Falls. We appreciate it. May we steward it well, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry. My apologies. I was with the kids, and I didn't know which door to come in. So, I apologize that I did not make it in time.
Please come forward, would you? You can add a blessing.
Okay. I'm sorry. Sorry. Tell me, Father, we just thank you for your love for us and that everything you do for us is for our good. We just thank you for the spirit of service that you give these council members, that they would serve our community and serve it well. We just ask that the conversation in the room be pleasing to you and the decisions that made be made are good for the city of Fergus Falls. We just love you this evening, Father, and we just ask this in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
And I'll try and do better next time.
Not to worry. Thank you very much. And now we'll call this January 21st, 2014, city council meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Sinstallin.
Here.
Hicks.
Yeah.
Sinstallin.
Here.
Shire.
Here.
Rachel.
Here.
Fish, Cyclos, and Runquist are all absent.
We do have a quorum. Is that not true?
Yes, we do.
Thank you. There are no public hearings this evening. Under awarding of bids, we will need a resolution to accept quotes for Wellhead Protection Plan, and I'll ask engineer Dan Edwards to address that.
Thank you, Your Honor. As we outlined in the memo you have in front of you back in November of 2012, we started the process with the Department of Health to have a Wellhead Protection Plan for the city of Fergus Falls. This is required by state statute and is part of the Federal Drinking Water Protection Act. In going through the process now, we have gone out for proposals, received two different team proposals back, evaluated those. We are recommending to move forward with a team proposal from Houston Engineering, Inc. and Leggett, Brashears, and Graham, Inc., in the total amount of $19,873. This would be doing our Wellhead Protection Plan, Part One. They're both very experienced, and they did also have the lowest overall cost.
Any questions? Someone offer?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Anthony. Is there a second?
I'll second, sir.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Sinstallin.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Sinstallin.
Yes.
Shire.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
The resolution is approved. And are you going to address the resolution to accept quotes for city council chamber improvements?
Yes, Your Honor. As you can notice, we talked about in the memo that city staff is doing some of the removal work. You can see they've started in here working on that now. But there was two packages for some carpet tile and walk-off mat and also for some wood-based trim and door replacements. We went out for proposals on those, received a proposal from Comstock Construction, totals This falls within the budget we have set for this project, and we'd recommend accepting their quotes.
Someone offer? I'll offer, Your Honor. Thank you.
I'll second. I just had one question.
Very good.
So, in a case like this, I understand you don't need to go for bids. You can get these quotes from these contracts. But do you have an internal estimate, so you kind of something to weigh against? I mean, I know you said it's under the jet total project cost, but do you have like an estimate from your perspective of what something like this should cost?
Right, we do. It varied a little bit. I think we were initially looking at this phase as being somewhere between $25,000 and $30,000 if you include the architectural fees and everything. So, what we're looking at now is approximately $20,000 in the quotes from Comstock, then there will be the city staff time for the removals and the architectural fees. So, they are, it does fit within the budget we've set. You're correct. It's less than the amount we set aside each year for improvements in this particular one.
So, I just, so there's some sort of internal checks or balances when you only have one quote?
Great. We have an estimate before we go to the, where we think it should fall.
Thank you.
Any other? Roll call, please.
Sinstallin.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Sinstallin.
Yes.
Shire.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
The resolution is approved. Under petitions and communications, this evening we have with us Tom Cumberbatch and Judy Bredow, who will present an award towards zero deaths award to the Fergus Falls Police Department. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman. Some of you I've known for years, especially the mayor, I guess, and Mr. Nicomoh, and most of you know me from when I worked at the police department and I retired. It's going on 13 years now, so it's been a little while. I then went to work for the Minnesota Department of Public Safety Office of Traffic Safety as a law enforcement liaison. And as a liaison, what I am is kind of the middle guy between the state office of traffic safety and local law enforcement agencies in northwestern Minnesota. Northwestern Minnesota is described as the Thief River Falls, Detroit Lakes, and Saint Cloud Patrol District, so kind of an L-shaped. As part of that, I worked with what a lot of you knew in the past as a safe and sober projects, which was strictly an enforcement project. And in the last few years, the state has put all their traffic safety programs under an umbrella called TZD, or Towards Zero Deaths. And that is all the programs with the Office of Traffic Safety, the Department of Public Safety, DOT, and Department of Health, and anything that really is traffic safety now falls under that umbrella. In Fergus Falls, you have two of those entities at work here. One is with the TZD enforcement, which is with the law enforcement, and then we have the Towards Zero Death Safe Communities Coalitions, which the Fergus Falls Police Department is a part of, a big part of, and that's what Judy Bredow is here for tonight. The thing I want to talk about real quickly in law enforcement, how things have changed in what we are going to, at a state level and encouraged to nationwide, is called high visibility enforcement. And high visibility enforcement is just what it sounds like. It is very high visibility enforcement that happens that everybody can see. It's not a big secret anymore what we're doing. I shouldn't say anymore. But I got to tell you that when I started for the police department 40 years ago, you know, we had one radar at that time, one stationary radar, big old thing that hung out the window, and if we sat somewhere and if we could get the unmarked car, we really had something. And if we wrote a couple tickets in that day with that radar, we were really doing something. In all reality, what we were doing then is we were teaching two, three people the rules of the road and not the speed. Now, really, a bang for the buck, that isn't all that good. And what with high visibility enforcement is, we want everybody to know what the issue is. It's in the paper. You've seen it before, that there's this enforcement period coming up. And then we want to remind drivers again, where you'll probably see in the future, road signs, diamond-shaped signs or lighted signs that say, "Seatbelt Enforcement Zone Ahead" or DWI Enforcement Zone. The first thing that law enforcement will tell you is, holy smokes, it's tough enough to detect these violations in first place. Now you're telling me I have to put up a sign that warns everybody coming into those zones that that's what you're going to be looking for. First of all, amazing, this project was down in Anoka to start with. People would drive right into those zones doing the same violation. You have a big lighted sign telling them they're entering. And so, we know that driving behavior doesn't necessarily change because there's a big sign. But the whole idea behind that is, you let everybody know you're going to do this, and so they see it in the media or hear it on the radio or read it in the newspaper. And now I'm out driving, and all of a sudden I see a sign that says, "Seatbelt Enforcement Zone." Oh, yeah, that's right. I heard it on the radio. They're out there cracking down on seatbelt violations, and then a few blocks down the road, I see a squad car with a car pulled over. Oh, yeah, that guy just got a ticket for seatbelt or impaired driving, whatever it is. And I go by, when all reality, that stop could be for anything. It could be for a taillight out, it could be for just anything. But the whole idea is that everybody driving by there now is getting a little lesson in driver behavior. Before, we just taught it to those couple that we stopped. Now, everybody driving by is getting that message. So, just to let you know that in the future, you may see that, these signs. It's going to be a requirement for what we call the 2015 grant, which starts in next October, or this October, this year. So, when you do see that, you'll know what that's all about, high visibility enforcement. We think it's the biggest bang for the buck, and nationally, it's a big push. And I just wanted to give you just a couple of things. One of the reasons, some of the reason why we got concerns here in this part of the state, we have concerns all over the state, but we do seatbelt surveys across the state regularly. The state just finished up on some in this area. It was actually the county engineers were a part of it, and this data just came out within the last week, and we're in west-central Minnesota, according to their data, and that it's Manoman County on down to Pope County, kind of this whole part of the state. And I'm not happy to report that this is the second lowest area in the state for seatbelt usage at 77.3 percent. That's not where you want to be, when the state average is in the 90-some percent. So, we know we got a lot of work here to do. We think high visibility enforcement is one way to raise that up. And in that effort, we work with the Safe Community Coalitions, which Judy Bredow will tell you a little bit about. How's that?
Okay. For one thing, we want to thank, our safe coalition wants to thank the city of Fergus Falls, especially for the partnership that we have had with the police department. It's been fantastic. And also, they do a lot for the alcohol server training at all the liquor establishments. And recently, it was the billboard and poster display that you probably saw, the billboard with the police cars. There was a police car and two police officers involved in that. And I should mention that the one before that was in our garage. It was an underage drinking event that when the sheriff came and the police and they were carrying out kegs out of their cars and bringing it into our garage, our neighborhood was stunned. They didn't know what was going on. Well, it was just a production. And then also, the involvement with our coalition, we have membership in there, so we always have a police officer involved in the sheriff's department. And on May 14th, it's on a Wednesday, all of you are invited to a special recognition luncheon, and you'll be getting invitations, and we highly recommend for you to attend because one of the police officers, Officer Tony Schmidt, he's going to be honored for the Outstanding Traffic Safety Partner for 2013, and he'll be there. And so, put that on your calendar, and please be there. It's RSVP, and like I said, you'll get an invitation. And then I'm going to give some local stats, too, that Tom said he had some as well, but this is just for Ottertail County now. There have been eight deaths in Ottertail County in 2013, and that's down from 11 in 2012. And 87 percent of those deaths were local Ottertail County residents, and 80 percent were male, 43 were impaired drivers, and 30 percent were not wearing seatbelts, and the average age was 45. So, that wasn't us grandmas or grandchildren. It's right in the middle there. And then Ottertail County has the highest number of teenage traffic deaths in the whole state. And last year, no, for a four-year span, from 2009 to 2012, there were eight deaths in the entire state for teenagers, and 86 percent were not buckled in. And that is just a sad, sad statistic. What we are, what the coalition is doing that we know for sure right now is that on May 1st, there's going to be a mock crash at the Fergus Falls High School, and that's really a big event and a very important event. And now, starting March, there's going to be a new program for driver's education, and parents are to be participants in this driver's education program as well, and that's put on by the Fergus Falls school system, the driver's training program, and it'll be at the Fergus Falls High School. So, that's a new thing that I think is good, that parents are involved in what the children are being taught for safe driving. And then we have this joy ride, you've probably heard about that. It's an alternative program, and they're adding 2,000, I said 203 new bars.
I don't think that's right.
No, how about three? New bars to its service starting in May, and we encourage Ottertail residents to acknowledge and recognize these establishments in Ottertail County for their commitment to offering free rides or safe rides as an alternative to drinking and driving. And I don't think that's, I have anything more to say about our safe coalition, but if any of you want to be a part of our team, you sure are welcome. We'll gladly take you. Thank you.
Periodically through the year, I'm able to nominate law enforcement agencies to receive an award, and that award comes in the form of equipment. And recently, and I think it was for the July Speed Mobilization, I select, because of the Fergus Falls Police Department not only involved in the Ottertail County TZD enforcement grant, but also their involvement with the Safe Communities Coalition, I nominated Fergus Falls Police Department, and then they, at the Office of Traffic Safety, immediately said, "That's a good choice." And I was able to contact them, see what kind of equipment they needed, and they indicated they could use a radar. So, we ordered that. It did come in, and I'm here tonight to present that. I wanted, I mentioned earlier about this, so when I first started, we had the stationary radar, it had the big cone that sat outside of the window, and you had about a 10-pound brick that sat on the dash that had your readout to it. And there was a lot to those radars. But we, at that time, we really thought we had something. Today, it's changed. Now, in that particular radar that I started with was, you had to be sitting still, and you could only detect cars that were coming at you. It has changed. Right now, what I'm presenting tonight is a radar. We call it a dual antenna stalker radar. It's got an antenna that shoots to the front and to the back. That big one that sat outside of the window has been replaced by one of these, one for each direction. It's able to pick up traffic coming at them, going away from, coming up behind them, just all kinds of things that the old radars could not. The big box that sat on the dash is replaced by this, and we know technology, everything's gotten smaller. But what good piece of equipment would be complete without a remote control? And so, they also have that. The technology has changed. The problem is, the cost is gotten, has gone up also, so that when an agency says that they'd like to have a radar, I'm glad they do that, because sometimes we run this equipment beyond when we ought to be, just because of budgets and everything else. So, if they could use this kind of equipment, we want to see every squad car that's out in, that's working out on the roads to have a good piece of equipment. So, when they said they wanted a radar and I, I tickle pink. So, I would like to tonight, present this to Chief Burden.
You.
And I thank you for the work you do. I thank the city council for allowing good enforcement to happen here in Fergus Falls that doesn't happen everywhere. We know it's got a lot of things worked from the ground up. When it comes to good enforcement, it's got to start from the top down. They've got to know, they got your support. Kyle's men and women need to know that they have his support, and it's got to work, or it just don't work. It just does not work. So, again, I thank you guys for what you do. I thank you, Kyle, and your officers for what they do, and together, we're going to reduce the severe crashes and fatal injuries in Minnesota, starting right here. And again, I thank you. Appreciate it.
I'll just make a quick comment. I'd like to thank both Tom and Judy. I've probably given Tom a few of the great hairs on top of his head over the years, and I've had the pleasure of working with Judy for many years now. But it truly is a community partnership. It is not only about enforcement, but it's about education, and without a community partner, especially with Judy, we probably couldn't make that happen. So, I just want to say thank you to, you two as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Congratulations.
I would ask one more thing, that at some point you would have a motion to accept a piece of equipment from the state of Minnesota and put into the police department.
We'll do that right now.
I'll offer that resolution, or that motion.
Thank you, Ben. Second?
I'll second, Ben.
Randy? Or was it Anthony? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion is carried. Thank you so very much. There is no open forum this evening. Under the consent agenda, the following are non-controversial items intended to be approved with one motion without discussion. If a council member, staff, or member of the public would like to discuss an item, please ask that it be removed, and it will be placed elsewhere on the agenda. Item one, a resolution to accept the donation in the amount of $211,261.66 from the 544 Foundation for the Community Arena. Total collected to date is $2,542,571.21. Item two, a resolution approving the plans and specifications and authorizing the advertisement of bids for Public Improvement 9683, the installation of dehumidification system using the pre-purchased unit. Item three, a motion to appoint Lois Josephson to the Heritage Preservation Commission, Nancy South to the historic, I'm sorry, to the Human Rights Commission, and John Cox to the Arts Item five, there's a frog in here, excuse me. Item five, or four, rather, a motion to approve minutes from the January 6, 2014 city council meeting. Thank you. Item five, a motion to approve licenses, and you have a roster of those in your packet. I'll entertain a resolution to approve the consent agenda.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Randy, thank you.
I'll second.
Scott, second. Roll call, please.
Sinstallin.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Sinstallin.
Yes.
Shire.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
The resolution is approved. Thank you. Under ordinances and resolutions, item one, second reading of ordinance 6, 7 series, amending the zoning map for 1100 block of Wyron's Road. And this evening, we simply need a roll call to approve that. Thank you, Bill. Would somebody offer? Oh, I.
Roll call.
Roll call, yes.
Sinstallin.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Sinstallin.
Yes.
Shire.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
The resolution is approved. Thank you. The next item is presentation of claims. This evening, we have $1,142,000.
Your Honor. There's two other ordinance and resolutions.
Come again?
H2 and 3.
Ah, I'm sorry. There we go. Take another drink of water. Item two, a resolution supporting the renewable fuel standard. And here we have a resolution, and I'm not sure I should try and read it at this point, but I'll give it a try. This past week, we had a meeting at the ethanol plant, and, where do we have that? H2. All right. Thank you. And it was involving the Commissioner of Agriculture and the Assistant Commissioner, who came here with a heads-up regarding an environmental protection agency standard that is being proposed to reduce the amount of ethanol that's authorized for production and for usage. And I will read the resolution, and if there are any questions, we can discuss those after that reading. This is a resolution supporting renewable fuel standard. Whereas, the renewable fuel standard, RFS, has been a successful, forward-looking policy that drives down the price of gasoline, creates jobs, sparks new business and investment in our community, and reduces our dependence on foreign oil. And whereas, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, has recently proposed reducing the RFS targets for ethanol, which will have serious negative consequences for our local consumers, businesses, and community. And whereas, the RFS drives down the price of gas, saving consumers an average of $1.09 a gallon in 2011, and allowing our community members to keep more of their hard-earned money. And whereas, ethanol can be produced here in Minnesota, which creates jobs and sparks new businesses and investments in our community, supporting over $5 billion in economic activity and 12,500 jobs in Minnesota each year, according to an independent study by the Minnesota Department of Agriculture. And whereas, using more Minnesota-made fuels reduces our dangerous dependence on foreign oil, keeping more of our money here at home instead of sending it overseas, often to countries hostile to the United States. And whereas, ethanol is a cleaner burning fuel than gasoline, reducing greenhouse gas emission and protecting our air, land, and water. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Fergus Falls, Minnesota, to support this resolution in our community that opposes any reduction in the RFS and calls on the EPA to protect current targets for ethanol protection. The above and foregoing resolution was offered at a regular meeting of the city council held on January 21st, 2014, by a council member.
I'll offer, Your Honor.
And moved its adoption, was seconded by a council member.
I'd like to second.
Anthony. And adopted by the following vote. Roll call, please.
Sinstallin.
Yes.
Hicks.
I'll abstain.
Sinstallin.
Yes.
Shire.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
We don't have enough to make.
Can I vote?
Yes.
Okay, then I'll vote yes, obviously.
So, we'd have our five affirmative votes.
You have five affirmative votes. I don't see a conflict there.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Attested to, whereupon the above resolution was duly adopted, the city administrator, Mark Seibert, will sign it and adopted Mayor Hal Leland. Would you care to comment, Anthony, on this?
I mean, just briefly, basically, they want to reduce a renewable standard by about 15 percent, which would pretty much be the effect of taking, shutting every ethanol plant in the state of Minnesota down, if you concentrated it into one area. And, yeah, obviously, it creates jobs, but it's, I mean, the biggest challenge is that there will be, you know, there'll be no more investment funds into renewable fuels in the future, because the government, you know, created the momentum and said, you know, we have the standard to meet, and then all of a sudden, they're going to take that standard away. So, people that have invested in renewable fuels, you know, are left high and dry. And, you know, the biggest one is on the solulose front, you know, where there's alternatives to using corn, but, you know, it's hard enough to get investment as it is, and it would be even harder. And, you know, as this says, it's obviously, you know, we're sending money, you know, to other places, but, I mean, the plant in Fergus adds at least 15 cents a bushel to every bushel of corn, you know, in the area. Whether you sell the corn to the plant or you don't, we still lift the prices, and we consume 20 million bushels, and we have over a $2.5 million payroll. So, if you say that that, you know, turns over, you know, five times, that's 12 and a half million dollars that goes around the community just from a labor perspective. So, you know, the plant offers a lot of benefits to rural Minnesota.
No question about it, and this resolution will be forwarded to the Environmental Protection Agency, and I understand the Ottertail County is doing the same. And so, the advice of the Agricultural Commissioner was to get your cards and letters sent to the EPA, because it does make a difference. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Now then, we need a resolution to approve the Community Arena concessions agreement. And, Bill, are you addressing that?
Thank you, Your Honor, and our city attorney, Ralph Niccolmo, has worked on this project as well. But at our last committee meeting, our park and rec manager, Steve Plaza, brought before you the concessions agreement. We had talked about them at some meeting in the past, and the Hockey Association was going to go and deliberate on what option they would prefer. Basically, you had two different agreements before you. One is an annual agreement that would have been from January 1 through December 31 of 2014. The other agreement would have been an ongoing. That initial term would have been for the 2014 year, but it would automatically renewal, renew, but would have 180-day out clause. And I believe, and Ralph, correct me if I'm wrong, but their reasoning for wanting 180-day out clause is because the end of our fiscal year is in the middle of their season, so I think they were concerned about having a lot of their inventory on hand, and then if we were to end the contract abruptly like that, they would be stuck with a pile of inventory. So I think that's the reason. Ralph and I are fine with either contract that you would go with. It doesn't matter to us. We can work under either one. So that's why we recommended, then, we go with that, that option with 180-day out clause. So that's our recommendation from the committee coming forward, and it's up to you as a council.
Any questions?
I'll offer a resolution going with option A.
Thank you, Ben.
The committee recommended. And I'll second that, and I just want a clarification. The, there's a Schedule A, an attachment, that would be reviewed annually in front of the council? With the rates that would be?
That's, that comes in the other agreements, not in the concession agreement.
Okay.
That's with their individual user agreement, and those are contracts we've already adopted, but yes, that needs to come back to the council every year, because it, it sets the new rates that are based upon the budget that we adopt. So the concession agreement is separate from that, but there's no rates tied to the concession agreement.
Okay. So that, the potential, and my main concern on this was that future councils, they would have this agreement that just keeps going on and on, and it's not, it's not brought in front of new councils that, that are initiating it today.
Yeah, so we could, we could bring that back as, you know, and remember, there's a concession agreement going. It would be up to us as staff to make sure that comes back, and.
That's simply just to provide concession services at the arena. Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm, and I'm, I'm okay with it, and I understand their concern. I just want that, that, that agreement brought before the council, not necessarily for approval, but just so that it's, it's aware that it's there.
Okay. So we'll note that in the minutes, and then put that out on our calendars as well, so when we bring the other Exhibit As before you, that we better at least mention the, explain the concession agreement and how it works then at that time.
Thank you.
Great.
Any other? Roll call, please.
Sinstall.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Sinstall.
Yes.
Shire.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
The resolution is approved. Now, we'll go to presentation of claims this evening, in the amount of $1,142,489.88. Any questions? Please refer them to Bill Sonmore. I'll entertain a resolution to approve.
I'll make the resolution.
Anthony, thank you.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Randy? Roll call, please.
Sinstall.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Sinstall.
Yes.
Shire.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
The resolution is approved. There are no committee, board, or departmental reports this evening. Under reports from staff and administrative officers, we will have an update on Public Improvement 9698, the library renewal project, and I think Aaron Smith is here to do that.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. The selection committee has drafted and approved the request for qualifications for the library project at their recent meeting, and a copy is included in your packets. We plan on issuing the RFQ by the end of this week, with proposals from interested project teams due by March 17. That's the update.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward. The next item was to be an update on Regional Treatment Center and matters of that sort. And because of a almost-perfect storm, we have had to make some adjustments, and this evening, we have three council members missing. We have our city administrator missing, and our grant consultant is rather tied up with other kinds of businesses. So I'll read a statement to you that was forwarded to us this afternoon by Kent Mattson, and concerning Fergus Falls Regional Treatment Center Historic Properties Development Proposal. There was scheduled for the City Council meeting this evening, a closed meeting to discuss offers slash counteroffers from historic properties regarding the remainder of parcel D of the Fergus Falls Regional Treatment Center. There was also an intent to hold a project update on the open meeting portion of the agenda. Through the dialogue with city staff, some of the council members, and the city attorney, it was decided to postpone the closed meeting and the information update on the open agenda due to no activity to report. Since some of the council members and Mark Severt were not available for this evening's meeting, there was also discussion to move the dialogue on appointment of a liaison to the February 3 meeting. Accordingly, we will be ready on February 3 to provide an information update and discuss the liaison arrangements. I did talk to Ray Willey today and confirm that he is assembling the information requested to be provided to the city by the end of January. Ray confirmed that he is working on the submittal, including the financial source information, and he will have it in our hands by January 31. I did explain that we will be providing the council with an update on February 3 council meeting. I asked Ray if there was anything he needed from us at this point, and he indicated there is nothing he needs from us. I had also confirmed on January 7 whether or not Ray needed any follow-up or clarity from my last call with him. If anyone has any questions, please let me know. Otherwise, we will be in touch further as soon as we receive the information submittal from Ray and his group. And this was forwarded to our attorney, Ralph Niccolmo, as well. Any questions or comments?
I just had one.
Ben?
Comment. I had two calls from, independent one another, but they both were asking the same question. So I'm wondering, when we talk about this at February 3 at the open meeting, maybe, Bill, could you provide the breakdown of the funds and what's been spent, and how much, what's remaining of that, I believe it was initially a million dollars? What's been spent, and then also what outstanding, you know, what outstanding bills we have yet to be paid, and so on and so forth? I think you've given us an update at one point, and I don't.
Yeah, I can provide an update with certainly what the balance is at, and it started out as a million dollars. And then, yeah, I'm just thinking out loud as far as what's remaining to be paid, that remains to be seen, but we'll, but certainly can tell you where it's at and what the balance is, so.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Under Old Business, action on request for wetlands replacements for development of property at 1150 Western Avenue. And Dan, are you addressing that?
So the property at 1150 Western Avenue, you see on the aerial pole there, there's a wetland on the southeast corner that intrudes into the lot. There's a.
Large wetland on the western part of the lot, right next to the Western Avenue Street, that has a big impact on the usability of the lot. Starting last fall, the property owners and potential developers of the lot had begun the process that's required whenever you want to mitigate a wetland because of potential development. And they'd followed that process. It came back to our December 16 City Council meeting, where there was a recommendation from the technical evaluation panel that there be, there were some modifications made, and there are requests that it be further evaluated, to see if any other potential modifications could be required to minimize the impacts on the wetland. At that point, the council, as the local government unit, was responsible for decision-making on this, they took over this part of the process and directed the staff to work with the developer and their representatives to review the site plan and see what could or couldn't be done, and what was reasonable in terms of development for this property. We've gone through that process. I do have up here one of the sheets that was derived from that, to try to place it, this is the edge of Wyron's Pond, which is showing up over here. This is the wetland that intrudes into the southeast corner of the lot here. This is our stormwater basin, existing stormwater basin, which shows there. And then, a little harder to see here, is the actual wetland, which is in this part there. I laid out in the memo many of the different things we considered and looked at, as far as potential development for this lot. To come down to the bottom line there, we did have a extended amount of vegetation to be, remain in place or restored here to protect this wetland on the southeast corner, so that won't be impacted at all by development. We also have a green buffer surrounding the area, again, for sediment control and to help avoid any impacts on any of the wetlands. However, in every possibility we looked at, the wetland here, because of its location right in the middle of the property, no matter what we did, there was restricted access on either side, because of what we would have had to maintain. So it would have been impacted to some degree, but the size of it and location basically took away reasonable value for the development of this property. We went back and looked in the historical records. Back in 1979, there was originally a preliminary plat prepared that showed this whole area, and it included the ditch which area, the Holiday Inn area, as they were originally developed, as being future business, commercial, or industrial property. So way back then, looking at 35 years, almost back, it was always intended that this be a developed area, the road layout was set up to service that area. So looking at all the different options, we came to the conclusion that the best we could do, really, for the developability of the site, to make it reasonable, and because of the need for proximity to the local business that wishes to expand on here, was simply protect this wetland, as we had done with the other development around here, and require them to mitigate this wetland, which would be a total replacement, but they have to do it on a two-to-one ratio, because of the type of wetland it is. And they can do that through the state process, through wetland credits. But in effect, this wetland will go away. You'll see there'll be a building in here, there'll be some pavement right around the building for the parking required by the zoning and for access. There'll be a crane sitting in here for their business, and the remainder of the surface in here that's not in green will be basically either crushed bituminous or crushed concrete, so that there's not any dust control issues with the development. It'll be used for storage for the facility. So our recommendation at the bottom of the memo is to approve the full mitigation of this wetland, in other words, the replacement of this, following the state process, and then also maintaining, as we showed in here, the additional vegetative buffers to protect the other wetlands, so it's not impacted at all. And related to the site development, but not to the wetland issue, is there would be an expansion of the existing stormwater basin, so that the water coming off this lot goes through the basin for cleanup before it discharges into the lake, and then eventually, with control, comes through an existing storm sewer, back out through the pond by the Best Western. So staff recommendation is that we approve this development site plan as shown here, and permit the mitigation, full mitigation of that western wetland.
Any questions by the council?
I'll offer, Your Honor.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Any comments from the developers? Roll call, please.
Sinstall.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Sinstall.
Yes.
Shire.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Resolution is approved. Thank you. There is no new business. There are no announcements. Is there any other business to come before the group, or we will be adjourning? We will convene a Port Authority meeting afterwards, but we will not have a closed meeting, as was indicated in the communique earlier. Meeting adjourned.